One, especially those here in chamber and of course who might be also viewing through Zoom. We appreciate your attendance. Today is a special work session of the City Council of the City of Kingman held at five o'clock on Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. I've asked Counselor Ward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if we could all stand for that.
I've pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by a consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. You do have a call to order. I guess we did not. So, item number one, council discussion on city manager executive recruitment process. Gov HR will review with City Council the preliminary schedule and next steps for the city manager recruitment process. We'll turn some time over to Manager Miller. Ted, you want to start?
Well, I'm going to keep this at an arm's length. This is really for your benefit tonight, but Krista, did you want to go ahead and come up briefly and then introduce Mary? Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here tonight. Krista Toswak, Kingman Resources Director. I'm here to let you know that I've provided some packet information in the hard copy form. I know some of it was attached to your council agenda, but you have the preliminary schedule. You have a stakeholder input and candidate interview process options to review. And then you have the city manager job description that you all adopted prior to that. So I'll introduce to you tonight Mary Jacobs from Gov HR USA. This is Mary.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's my privilege and honor to be here today and to help walk you through the process, get your input and feedback so we can make some final adjustments to the schedule and to the degree to which you'd like to invite stakeholder input. So, oh, thank you so much. So, I've provided to you a tentative schedule that I just wanted to walk through with you very briefly. Basically, we're in the beginning stages now and then it would conclude mid to late February. And in between, we've built in time for obviously the recruitment process, the due diligence process and interview process that my colleague Sarah McKee and I will conduct the background review process and then that whole preliminary or semifinalist interview and then finalist interview process that the council will conduct as well. And so that takes a little bit of time and it's the holidays. And so we kind of worked through that. And then based on your input tonight, we might have to make a few little adjustments and I'll kind of explain. So basically, you know, tonight we'll, I'll walk you through the next document. In fact, you know, that's what we're going to do now because the schedule is pretty self-explanatory and I'll explain to you after I get your input how it might be adjusted. Probably not by much, if at all, maybe a week or two depending on, it really has to do with your degree of interest and how extensive level of community stakeholder input that you'd like at the beginning of the process, in other words, for the candidate profile. And then, but what I have prepared for you on your second document is, it's broken out into two components. First is the stakeholder input process. I've put what I thought is a recommended approach with some options in there. And I'll go through it and then I'd like to get your feedback and input. And then the second is the candidate interview process. And again, do that. But the other thing that we're going to spend some time on tonight is I've got some in-depth questions and maybe we'll save them to the end for what you would like to see in your next city manager. And I've got some questions I want to go through and I'm going to invite your discussion. And I'll be taking very detailed notes so that we can capture all of that in our recruitment materials and then ultimately look for that candidate, meet those expectations for you in the process and use your input in how we conduct our interviews as well, so we can screen for that as well. So, if you'll take that document on the stakeholder input process option. So, what we're doing here is your input is the most crucial and we'll get to that at the end because this is an employee who works for you. But this individual also works very closely with the community in a whole variety of different ways and is your face and represents you when, you know, for all of those administrative functions, plus the very, very important role that they have of managing the organization and the individuals, the department directors and the staff and leading them, which is also another very important role. So, all of those, all of that input is crucial. And so this is, so the things that we could do that are in addition to getting the input from council this evening, typically we would at least get invite some input from the leadership team. And I kind of go through that as a way of validating what we hear from council as well. So we'll hear that from you and then we might hear things from a little bit different perspective from the leadership team because this is this person's boss as opposed to your employee. And so it's might be maybe just a little bit different. The other thing is you have a number of boards and commissions that are very active here in the City of Kingman. And so another option might be to invite their input. We can do that in a couple of different ways. We can send a survey to all of them so that they all have an opportunity to provide input if that's what they want. And when I say a survey, it's brief. We keep it to just a few, a handful of questions where they're providing comments on traits and, you know, characteristics and most important priorities and those types of things so that, you know, it's not going to take them a long time to go through. We can also have focus groups with, you know, one or two focus groups with maybe the chairs or representative of them. Those would likely be virtual just because the timing and my colleague is on family medical leave at this point for a few weeks. And so we may not be able to come back up here to do a focus group, but we've done remote focus groups just as effectively, so that's also another option. If we do that, I definitely don't recommend more than nine or 10 people in a Zoom focus group so everybody gets a chance to contribute. So those might be invitations to just the chairs or the chairs and the vice chairs. So that's something to consider. And then other key stakeholders that I think would warrant those individual conversations. And I put a list here of ones that I think are probably pretty important to the City of Kingman, from the school superintendent, chamber exec, the county administrator or the board chair, the WACOG executive director. I know there's a lot of close participation and interaction with them. The regional medical center is probably a pretty important employer in Kingman and I would recommend might have some input. And the community college president who is, based on what I read, pretty active and might be an integral person to speak with. I would speak with every one of those on an individual basis. And basically what we're looking for is we're looking for themes. We're looking for validation of what the council says. But if you have other stakeholders this evening that you think should be added to the list, I'm happy to speak with them as well. And I can get all that contact information from Grady's staff or from Krista's staff and make contact with them in the next, you know, week, week and a half to get their input. And then lastly is an opportunity for the community to participate. And there's again, a couple of different ways to do that. First of all, there's the option of, you know, not necessarily needing full community input. Some councils, you know, feel very strongly this is their employee and that they are, they understand and have heard from the community about the kinds of things that are important. And so it's not critical that it be included in the front end of the process, but we do have, again, a brief survey that we could invite that you, your team would post it on your social media, you know, get it out through your usual channels, invite how, you know, open it for maybe 10 days or so, seven to 10 days. And again, people will just, they will be given the opportunity to do that. Another way that we can do this is we can set up an email address specific for this Kingman city manager recruitment. And we can simply, we can make that email address available and that's valuable for a couple of reasons. Number one, maybe people aren't that, you know, they're like, hey, I just have a question. Great, we'll receive that question. Those emails would come to us and we would respond. Maybe they're asking you and you say, I don't really know, or that's great. Why don't you provide that feedback to our consultant and you can give him that email address? We can also do both. So that's something that is included in our recruitment process. And, you know, again, what we want to do is make sure that this final candidate profile is reflective of not just the work, you know, most city manager jobs have the same type of work and you all, you have a job description that you've approved. So we'll pull a lot of information. We'll probably summarize it in a little bit different way, but it's about the who. That's really what we're trying to do, the who and the priorities. Because people who are considering job, you know, opportunities for the future, they also want to know, oh, they need someone, you know, with strong transportation background, I-11, that sort of thing. I don't really have that, so maybe I'm not. They kind of self-select themselves out if, you know, we have certain words or certain expectations based on what you're telling me, sometimes they'll self-select out. So we want that to be as accurate as possible and that helps us in the process and it helps us get you the right person. So I'm going to pause there and Mayor, maybe you can facilitate each one of these bullets in terms of getting input and I'll take detailed notes about, you know, is it a yay or a nay? Is it, go ahead, that sounds great. Yes, let's do that, but let's do this instead or let's skip that, whatever it is. And we've got, and then I'll make those notes and make it happen.
Okay, thank you. I almost feel, and council obviously that share this, let's talk about all this, but on number one there of the senior leadership team, I sort of agree on all that. Actually, almost everything, Mary, that you've mentioned, I think we're all, the more information, the better. And I know a number of you have always pointed out, we represent the people. And so the citizen participation in survey, I think that's key too. So, yeah. Actually, Counsel Sayley, I know you went through this before. And so is there any more guidelines you want to see added to this?
Thank you. I don't recall going this in-depth last time to reach out to get every, you know, a wealth of opinions. So this is a little bit different process, but I agree with you. I like the idea of the leadership team being able to give feedback. I think an electronic survey to our commissions, you know, would be fine. I wouldn't, I would not give a lot of time for them to respond. Some of them are just not good with answering emails, so I would do a short window. And those who are actively using their city email, they'll get to it. And those that aren't, you're not waiting for somebody that's never going to reply.
Okay.
And then, you know, having a phone conversation with these focus groups. I think if anything, helps strengthen our commitment to partnerships within the community and reinforces the idea that we do value these stakeholders and we value their opinions.
Oh, thoughts down over here?
So, thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of notations for the community stakeholders, just a couple of additions if the council would agree. You said a county administrator or board of supervisors chair, I'd like to do both.
Okay.
The city manager, we work in step with the county folks and the county manager especially. I like everybody else, the categories that you selected. The other addition that I would have is the elected mayor and/or managers of our sister cities, Bullhead City and Lake Havasu. We have a tri-city council. We just met this week and we work in lockstep with them as well. So I really feel like their pulse on giving input is important to us. So I'd like to see those additions.
And their mayor might delegate to their city manager because obviously their city managers actually deal a lot more with our city manager than, you know, most of it's just meet and greets as far as mayor to the city manager, opposing city manager.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Sure, yeah.
But yeah, all of the above.
The other addition is our representative, elected representative to the House, John Gillette. And then.
Our senator too.
Our senator, yeah, just because I know that we are looking to also get more involved at the state level with our legislation and having more of a presence. So I feel like their input as well, is this somebody that they're going to be able to work well with? And personality wise, are they going to be able to?
Great.
To be able to work well with that individual. So those are my additions. But I agree, everything else.
Mayor, on the elected officials that I have on my list, would you be so kind as to do an email introduction and copy me?
Sure.
And I'll give you the language you can cut and paste in your email.
That'd be great.
That way then they'll know that this is a legit ask for a few minutes of their time.
Okay, be glad to do that.
Okay, great.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric would like to speak.
Yes, Counsel Eric, go ahead.
Good morning, good evening, everyone. I would just like to say that Grady has set a very high gold standard for me personally, just because I've known him, but he's also been so thorough. As a stakeholder with our future plans with the airport, I would also like to incorporate either, maybe a big employer like Woodmark or, but actually, to encompass all of it, maybe the Kama president, Mr. Brackett, would be interested in helping us out with this?
Mm-hmm.
Just because manufacturing is becoming a big staple for Kingman as well.
Yeah, Kama stands for Help Me Out, our Kingman area.
Kingman area manufacturers, something with an M association.
Yep, so.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
I know, Counsel Eric, I thought about that too, you know, a number of the, especially the, like American Woodmark, some of them, but I don't know if we want to include, how many of the plant managers we'd want to include or not?
Yeah, so, I mean, Mr. Brackett's a through and through Kingman.
I think would be a great idea.
Okay.
And he would be a good voice for all of them as a whole, yeah.
So, nope, thank you for suggesting that.
Great.
I'll just add a note onto that, so he, you can get ahold of him at Bracket Air. That's his business out at the industrial park. But he's also our connection to airport operations as well because he's a pilot and comes from a family of pilots that use our airport. So you kind of will get both the industrial park and the airport by contacting him. That was a great suggestion from Jengus.
Well, and as far as leadership team, you know, we probably should make sure at least that Doug, even though Doug's not, he's under the, you know, Bennett Bradley and Economic Development, right? But we could be at him too, you know, because he is our airport manager. So there's some certain managers we want to try to include, yeah.
He's under the Public Works.
Oh, that's right, he's under Public Works. No, I know their offices are out there, so yes, it gets confusing. Yes, thank you for, yeah. Anybody else to add to that? Counsel Ward or Counsel Walker?
I think the Vice Mayor and Bailey.
Okay. Okay.
So Mayor, can I summarize so that everybody's on the same page about what we're going to do?
Mm-hmm, please.
So I will work with the interim city manager to connect with the senior leadership team members. And if there are a few ads that represent some areas, we'll include them in, you know, group discussions. I will develop an electronic survey to send all of our board and commission members so that they, each of them will have an opportunity. And I think that also gives you that flavor of the community input through your representatives on the boards and commissions. And I think that's a great idea. And then I will contact all of the people listed plus your state representative, you have two reps, right?
Actually, two legislators and one senator.
Two legislators and two, and the one senator. The mayors of Lake Havasu and Bullhead City.
And their managers.
And their managers.
And their city managers.
Okay, all right. Great. Scott Brackett with Bracket Air, who is representing the manufacturers group that I didn't get, didn't get all of the letters, but I will later. And to incorporate both the county administrator and the board of supervisors chair for Mojave County.
Yes.
Okay, great. And then we'll hold off on establishing an email unless you all tell me. If you're getting a lot of, you know, hey, what's going on, we want to provide, you can let me know and we can establish an email real quickly. But I will tell you, it's not something that happens frequently. It's kind of a one-off thing, but we do make that available to our recruitment. And I think you've got a really great process here. And it'll also, quite honestly, allow us to continue with the schedule that's posted. So I don't need to make any changes to it. The only thing that was going to change is if we had to wait for the, you know, the resident input. So I'll work with Krista and she can coordinate, probably with your city clerk, getting the information out to the board and commission members. And I should have that to them by Friday.
Mayor.
Hopefully it should go out Friday or Monday.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So in our pre-meeting to get prepared for this meeting, I just wanted to say that I wanted to make sure that we get as many applicants as we possibly can. So I just wanted to reiterate that the schedule is fluid. If we need more time to get more applicants and look for the right person. It was important for me to state that if we need to give more time on the front end and then, you know, it kind of drags it at the tail end, then I would hope that council would be okay with that, so if the schedule could be fluid.
Of course.
It just means Grady's going to be stuck with us more longer, that's all.
That's fine.
Of course, Vice Mayor. And we closely monitor how the applications are coming in. You know, it's hard to say what that number is going to be that you're going to get. You're looking for quality and that's the most important thing. So you may only have 20 or 25 applicants, but if you've got eight quality ones, that's pretty strong. So, but I will give you that feedback. Sarah and I will give you that feedback and we'll be very candid with you about, I think we need to do, you know, we're really having a tough time or the holidays have really impacted us. We'd like to push it out another couple of weeks or, you know, whatever it is. And we'll be very candid with you about that.
Okay, now the email you mentioned, that was, of course, in that last, that's what you, that was referring to that last bullet point, right?
Correct.
I don't, counsel, what do you think on that? Do we want citizen input on how much? I mean, on the one hand.
I think that, like you said, reaching out to all of our commissioners, which is a large group, is a good representation of our community as a whole. And I think you're going to get, you know, enough feedback from them that it kind of represents everybody instead of, you know, doing a community-wide outreach on this part. Although I do want to involve more of the community at the end.
I know, I know.
Right.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I tend to disagree only because I think that if we can keep the portal open for a short period of time, it gives opportunity for those that may not be, have been listed on the stakeholder but have been involved in the community. And we, I mean, more input is better. And if the link to the email is just going straight to you, then it's not coming to us. We, you know, we have a place that we can deposit those comments and you can, you know, validate them as they come in, so although I agree. I'd like to see it, but I, again, I don't.
Email, not the survey, right? To, or not make a community survey, but make an email available.
Make an email available so that if people are looking to provide feedback, we don't have to survey, you know, send a survey out. But then that way, only leave that, only leave that, you know, comment period to a certain amount of time. So people have, you know, those that are serious are going to make comment.
Okay. And that will be really based on the communication efforts you all do to say, hey, we're in the midst of our recruitment process, this is where we are. If you do have any comments about and maybe say the characteristics, the priorities and the skills, you know, that you think we should consider for the next city manager, email them to our consultant at. You post it and we put a deadline on it and give people an opportunity. You can do it through Facebook. I can help with the drafting of the communications for your team if necessary. So happy to do that.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, so I was talking about a survey.
Oh, my apologies.
Of like the whole town. So, but an email if people want to comment.
Right, because if people are interested, they'll comment.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we were talking about you.
Well, and I can see a number of our builders wanting to comment.
Sure, they might want to.
Our contractors, yeah, so they're a good party. Okay. Counsel Walker, anything more?
I think we did it.
Okay.
All right.
Move on to the next section.
I do have good marching orders on this one. So I did, and it's not absolutely crucial that you come to some, to final decisions about, or I can't, excuse me, they're not decisions because you're not allowed to make decisions in study sessions. Input on this, it can be finalized as we move along farther in the process. Input on this, it can be finalized as we move along farther in the process. But I did want to walk through some of the options available to you, so that we can do a little bit of thinking about it and pre-planning in advance, and your team can as well, in terms of that stakeholder input in the actual process. So I've broken it out, excuse me, I've broken it out into the semifinalists and then the finalists. And as you know, what will happen is, once we have done our due diligence and we prepare a recruitment report, we'll, we'll be discussing that report with you, all of those candidates in executive session, that is something that is allowed under state law. The council will then give us direction on the, the ones that you would like to, to interview. And so there's typically a two-level process, right? You interview first the ones you're like, yeah, those sound pretty good, and we're gonna do kind of those preliminary interviews. And then you'll select your top typically two or three. I've seen it as many as four, but it's usually two or three. But that, that'll be up to you. If you're like, wow, we got four really great candidates, bring them all in, like, that's not a problem. And so typically, those semifinal interviews are conducted solely by the council, because it's your decision to bring in those finalists. The stakeholder input process is typically for the finalists, and that's what I'm recommending to you for your consideration this evening, is that you also break that up into, you know, you would do the semifinalist interviews, and then the finalist interviews would be done with the community. Now, you can do those semifinalist interviews in a couple different ways. One is just for efficiency, for cost savings, and because we have such great technology today that we didn't have, virtual interviews for the first round is very common. You all can be in your, in the same space, some, some council members have people, I, I don't know what your rules are, but some people have them in their own spaces, it doesn't matter, but, but that virtual process is very effective. Sarah and I can either be here with you, we probably would be, we'd be here with you while those interviews were, were being conducted virtually. Then you would give us that feedback, and then we would invite them in for those, for the final interviews. Is that a fair approach to handle those preliminary candidates? Virtual, are you guys comfortable with the virtual? Or we can bring them in, and you can do it two, two ways. You can bring them in, say, two weeks before the final interview, so you get to know them and have just, you know, one after another. We could do them over a couple days if you prefer to do evening interviews. Excuse me. Or there is the opportunity, I've seen this where it's all done in one big fell swoop, but it's very exhausting for you. You bring them in, you have interviews all day long, you deliberate that day. Though, then, then we would call the ones, you know, that evening and say, hey, you're coming back the next day. And then they would, those would come back the next day and you'd have all of the... Now, the challenges with those are that you don't get a chance for the information to get out to the public, right? They don't get a chance to, because it's like the next day, you, you put it out late that night or first thing in the morning, and so there really isn't as much. The other thing is that, like I said, it, it's very exhausting for both you and for the candidates to go through that level of the, the interview process. Or you can bring them in a couple weeks before, and then select them and then bring them back. And of course, you'll have to pay travel both, both, you know, both times, but as, as I always typically hear from clients, it's, you know, it's the, it's the big picture, it's not the small dollars, right? So, excuse me. So those are, you know, those are kind of your options, and I wanted to lay those out so we can all, because when we're talking to candidates, they also kind of like to know what's the process, what do you think the general timeframe is? Because if they are being considered when we're going through that due diligence process, we have them pencil those dates in. That's important because they need to, or we'll hear from them, oh, I've, you know, I've got a family vacation planned, I can't make that week. And then we know, so we can work around that. So those are all important. So I will pause, Mayor, and let you and your colleagues discuss this.
Mayor Watkins?
I have a question.
Councilmember Eric, yep, I'm just watching for the little hand to go up, so I don't want to, I don't want to miss his opportunity to comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I had a quick question, you kind of touched on it. This is a nationwide search, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember.
And, and we pay for their flight and their hotel for the duration?
That's correct, sir.
And can you kind of just, just a window of what kind of a salary we're offering? Do we have that number?
Councilmember, the, the salary that was approved by the council, oh, I thought it was on the job description, but I think.
Krista?
Krista, you have that. There was a salary range that was approved by council, just a moment.
I, I believe the top was 225. I don't have it in front of me, but I know it was like 160 to 220.
I was gonna say it's either that or 180 to 220.
Okay, I just wanted to see what kind of a fire we lit, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I, I like, from, okay, my opinion, I like the semifinalist candidates just interviewed remotely. I don't think we need to ring everybody here.
I have a question about that, though.
Okay, go ahead.
My, my question, I did see that when I was looking through the paperwork, and we last time brought, you know, quite a few candidates and interviewed, I think we did the sort of exhausting two-day. That's how I remember it, maybe I'm wrong, but my concern with just doing a virtual, and I, and this, I want to ask you about your expertise on this, is that they haven't seen Kingman. This would be their future home if they were chosen, and they're just doing it virtually. And have you seen people become the top three, come out for the interview, see what the town looks like, and goes, no way am I living here, and now you're down to one or two instead of three or four?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers daily, yeah, it, it happens. It, it certainly does happen. It happens, you know, for a variety of reasons, people will withdraw. And, and so I, I do see your point, this is a rural area, it's not a major metropolitan area. And while it's a really good size with great amenities and everything, I do see the advantage of bringing, you know, bringing folks in. And, you know, maybe that's not the time that you do the, the full tour, because that would be a lot. If you brought in seven or eight or nine people at that level, maybe you don't do a tour. Or you put everybody in a van, but that's a little intimidating with that big of a group, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that either. But what you're saying is, we'll invest in you to come out, so you can see if it's as good a fit for you as it might be, as you might be for us. Because in this process, fit is critical, both ways. Fit is really important, and, and there is certainly something to be said for that in-person interview where you get the energy, where you get that feel for people and that comfort level, and so I have, I'm, I mean, I mean, I'm a big fan of it. I really am. I think having those personal interviews, I'm less of a fan of the doubled-up process, because it's very, very exhausting, and it's hard to get everybody together for what could end up being three days. Depending on the number of candidates that you have and the whole day, and then, you know, you got the staff involved, and you got community, you know, depending on what you have for the, for the community. So i- it really can go either way. There are definitely pros and cons, and that's why, that's why I'm talking to you this evening, to find out what your, what's your comfort level, what is your, what's your feeling on it?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not against the Zoom, but I, that is my concern, is that they haven't seen Kingman. And this may not really be the place for them, some, you know, we often see people think that this is either like Havasu, right? And it's nothing like Havasu, or it's like Phoenix, Kingman's nothing like Phoenix, we're the high desert, we're different. So I, I know from experience that it is very disappointing when you have your favorite, and then, or your second favorite, and then they drop out because circumstances, you know, didn't align. And so you almost want to eliminate those people before they make it into your top three, if Kingman isn't the place. It is extra expensive. I don't think we should do it all at once, or it should be a gap. I know last time the mayor, and I think the vice mayor, went to the cities the people even lived in and checked, checked into them a little bit deeper, I don't know if we're gonna do that, but you do, you do need time. I don't know, what, what, that's a lot. What do you guys think?
Mayor.
Thoughts? Go ahead. Especially in a workshop.
Yeah.
Don't, don't feel so formal that you have, because.
Okay.
You know.
Oh, I'm not shy.
That's why I'm saying that, please, just to speak up.
I, I am a fan of in-person, I read body language, I feel energy, I, all those things. And in-person is, to me, there's been a lot of times where things look great on paper, and they do well on Zoom, they're comfortable in their own environment, but putting them in an environment where they might not be so comfortable, you really get a true sense of that, that person. So I am in favor of in-person. I just want to ask you, this might be an off-the-wall question, but what if we got our applicants and we narrowed it down and, and did a Zoom prior to a semifinalist, you know what I'm saying? I, I, if, if we looked at, at, yeah, to narrow it down some, like we did a Zoom to narrow it down, and then we got some serious candidates for a semifinal, and then we, we brought them out, I mean, is that ever done, or?
Um, I can't say it's, it's never done. You know, we'll bring you, that's the thing, is I, I can't really tell, because I don't know how many really qualified candidates we're gonna have. I guess what I would tell you is, let's kind of play that one by ear.
Okay.
And maybe as it gets a little bit, you know, we might do our screening of, let's say, we, we talk to 15 or 18, you know, 15 or so people, and we bring you 12, because we, you know, and maybe six are in the tier one and six are in tier two. You may not need to do the, you know, all of them. If you're only gonna say, you know what, there's really only seven or eight that I bring, you might as well just all, bring them all in for that in-person interview, even if we did it over a couple days, you know, we could spread it out and do half on one day and half on the next day, and then you could have a meeting and, and call it down. I'll tell you what, one thing that from a, from a candidate's perspective, that they appreciate your willingness to bring them in twice, is they feel like you're willing to test them out and make an investment in them for an extra, you know, whatever, if they have to rent a car and they're maybe, let's just say, a thousand bucks, right? That's, you know, like, that, that's, that's a big message to them, that you want to do it and you want to do it right. And you're willing to pay a few, a few extra bucks for them to come in, because sometimes what those candidates do too, is that first time around, they bring their spouse. Because sometime, in fact, sometimes we encourage that, you know, like, hey, go ahead and, 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 you know, feel free to bring your spouse, because sometimes it's the spouse who says, there's no way I can find a job. You know, legitimate reasons, right, very legitimate. You think that you can, you get here, and the spouse says, I, I just don't know what I'm gonna do, I don't know, you know, where are the kids gonna go to school? Like, there's just all kinds of things that, that go through their minds. So I think it really is a very positive reflection on the council if you, if you choose to, to split it up and spend a few bucks and bring them in the first time around.
Very valid, very valid point, and I like the idea, most importantly, is that they bring their spouse. Because how many times have we seen doctors move here?
First or second time, yeah, for sure.
Doctors have moved here, and their spouse gets here and doesn't like it, and the doctor, and six months later, he's gone, or she is gone.
Yep.
So.
And I am not in favor of doing it back-to-back.
Yeah, okay.
So, I, I would rather be fresh for each occasion.
I was just thinking of the very first contact of the possible Zoom, because of the fact, even from seven years ago, technology now is so much better as opposed to back then. And so we could use it as a tool, and depending on their schedule too. I mean, we, we can be willing to do both.
Right.
I'm, I'm in favor of bringing them in. I, I'm not good at virtual interviews, and I know a lot of other people aren't comfortable with it either. And I want to look the guy in the eye when I'm talking to him. Ask Grady.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric has his hand raised.
I appreciate that.
I had a question of, these count, these applicants, they're gonna be working already, correct?
Most likely, not always, but most likely.
Okay.
You know, there might be a few that are in transition.
No, go ahead, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm, I'm good, Councilmember, please.
Okay, what happens to eliminated candidates? Like, after, we have eight people on our shortlist, on our semifinalists, and then we go down to three. Do those five go on like a, a waitlist or a shortlist of some sort that are kind of like on the back burner?
The ones that you don't select to move forward?
Yeah.
Um, that really is up to you. So sometimes council members are willing to say, you know, I don't want to rule candidate C out altogether, but we have these other three strong candidates, so please let them know, you know, they're not completely ruled out. You know.
So with, with the flexibility that we have, and the, knowing the current prices of the flights and being in the holidays, eight candidates can easily rack up to $10,000, $20,000, especially with rental cars and hotels. I, I'm personally for virtual, for the semifinalists, but I would also like to develop some sort of packet or PowerPoint that says, Kingman, welcome to Kingman, you know, this is what to expect, this is our amenities. These are our projects that we would like to work on in the future, we are pro-growth, all about economic development, this is what we expect. Kind of like a, an introduction for us and, and the job in general, while also showing the positives of Kingman. You know, show the Walpai Mountain Park, show Vegas is only an hour and a half away. And, you know, highlighting certain points, so that they don't come in not knowing what Kingman's all about as well. Because, I mean, pictures can get a lot of words across too. And so can video.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilor.
Two things, Councilmember Eric, I do want to just mention that these interviews would not happen until the week of February 12th. So we won't have to worry about the holiday pricing per se. Not that it won't still be an investment, it will be an investment, but I do, I did just want to clarify that. And I think, I think a welcome packet mailed to them or emailed to, to the candidates is a great idea. You know, could get a copy, excuse me, of the budget and, you know, and believe me, the good ones will have already done their research, and they will have found most of these documents on the, but if there's anything glossy things, you know, those, those are nice to send a little package to them ahead of time. Again, it really reflects well on the community, and I'm happy to work with your team to identify what that might be and, you know, go from there. I do want to.
Maybe we can call it an application packet where it also has some questions that we have for them along with it.
Maybe no, but no, but conversely, maybe questions they have. So, but I like the key word, the good ones are already gonna be doing all this homework.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would do, I would check out of town, if, I'd even, might even go there on my own, just to, on the download.
Some do.
Know what's going on.
But you, you are creating a pamphlet that has the information about Kingman.
Yes, we are.
That's part of the advertising.
Correct.
And Mr. Miller, maybe could we send Jangus the packet that we originally received that outlines the whole process that Gov, GovUSA?
GovHR.
GovHR, so sorry, I blanked out right there.
That's a great idea, because.
So that he can kind of see all this background information that he, he doesn't have about what they're gonna provide.
That's a great idea. We'll, we'll get it off to you, Councilmember Eric, that you can see what was actually in the scope of, of services that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
GovHR is gonna be doing for us, because I, I think you're kind of coming in the middle of the movie at a disadvantage, so I think that's a really good point, Councilmember, we'll do that.
Well, and to Councilor Eric's point, I, I really feel like we can put together all the information, and we'll definitely put our best foot forward. But until somebody actually puts boots on the ground and is able to get a feel for our community, interact with some people, maybe at a grocery store, or, you know, when they're stopping to get some food, or those are lifestyle experiences that you can't put in a, in a pamphlet, and they won't be able to experience unless they're actually here. So I hear what you're saying, I personally don't want to go through this process again, so I feel like we need to invest to get the right person. So I feel like we need to invest to get the right person as our fit so that they will stay for a very long time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also mention, um, I, I think I'm hearing a lot of comfort with in-person semifinal interviews. Um, one thing I do want to make you aware of is that, um, and your city attorney can weigh in otherwise, is that by, uh, by law, only the finalists need to be made public. Um, and so the semifinalists will come in, but, um, many candidates are very sensitive. They're, they're literally in a job right now.
That's right.
And so that information will need to remain confidential, uh, for that first round of interviews until such time as you all make a decision and then that, and then the finalists are, um, are made public. And because if they're not gonna be considered, they may not want their bosses to know whether they're an assistant manager, whether they're a manager somewhere, or, you know, have another type of position. They may not be prepared to, to share that with them yet. And so we're very, very sensitive and we do keep that confidentiality. And we'll remind you of that as we go along. Uh, but how we design those in-person, um, interviews with your staff and of course Krista will keep everything confidential, uh, but, but, um, you know, we, we do want to make sure that those names remain such.
Okay.
Good point. Thank you, Mary.
Did you, you didn't think?
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm good with in-person interviews. I think you get a better feel for the person. Make sure they're a fit for us, you know, but we can weed down and get, you know, down to the final six or whatever. Decide how many we want to bring. Right. But I, I think we get a better feel for them and they get a better feel for our community. And it sounds like that when we bring the semi, semifinalists in, that, that probably needs, we need to interview, interview them in executive session?
Yes, sir.
All interviews.
All interviews in executive session.
Except for the finalist. Well, no, not interviews, I mean.
You can do those interviews in executive session as well.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
And I, I would recommend that.
But you said something that by law, the, the three finalists, those names are, are public.
The names are public at that point, yes.
Okay, that's where I messed up.
And your newspaper will be interested in wanting to cover it and as well, they should. This is, this is an important decision. Yes, absolutely. So they'll have backgrounds and, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, you did say that the semifinalists are only interviewed by the council, is that right?
Correct.
Is there, um, what do, what are your thoughts on an interview, but also some sort of a dinner or a luncheon? Something after the interviews that's a little bit more relaxed, where you can kind of get a feel for the person? If they're already here, what do you guys think about that? Because I think, you know, interviews are one thing, but then if you get, um, relaxed and, and kind of in a friendly atmosphere, you, you get a better feel for that person.
My, um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers daily, my suggestion is that you hold that for the final.
Okay.
Um, and for a couple of reasons. First of all, even amongst the, themselves in terms of the individuals, needs to be, needs to remain confidential.
Oh, I understand.
And so then if you're at a restaurant and somebody sees you and they're like, who's this? And, you know, I, I just, I would recommend that you hold that off until the.
Yes.
No, it's a good point.
I get it.
I've worked in small towns. I know how that works. Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
We appreciate your guidance. Yes.
So.
I'm better in a more relaxed situation.
I know. I, I think the in-person will be a good opportunity. And maybe what we can do is we can structure the interview part where you bring them in and rather than sitting them right at a table right away, everybody's standing and having a cup of coffee with, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, maybe we can do it more informally that way and then everybody sits down fifteen minutes later. And you, everybody's standing up kind, so I'll think about that and how we might be able to structure something. So it kind of, and it's good for them too. Like you say, councilmember Ward, it's hard doing interviews remotely, but it's hard. It's very, um, nerve-wracking anyway to do interviews. So, um, I, I appreciate that you're thinking about your future candidates and your future city manager. The finalist process, now this is where the stakeholder involvement, I think, is really important. And I, I outlined a couple of things that I think would be really useful for, uh, for you to include in the process so that we can build in that timeframe and that timetable. One is a, a tour of the city and highlight of those key issues. And, um, you know, there's two ways to do it. Everybody goes in one car. Or as we're moving them through these different types of panels and that kind of thing, then they would just get a single rotation with the same person in the car individually. I, I prefer that route because, um, like you said, that comfort level of, oh, it's just one person. It's like, oh, you know, I can, and you're sitting in the front seat with them and there's not somebody behind you talking and, you know, you're trying to, so, um, you know, strategically picking who is that right person to do that, um, you know, that one-on-one, maybe, you know, an hour, hour and a half drive around town and this is this and that kind of thing, I, I think is really useful. And they really appreciate it because they'll ask great questions. And then we also take that person and ask for their feedback. And we share that feedback with you as, as well. How were they? You know, what, what, what's their demeanor? How do they? Because that's important. How do they treat the front desk staff when they walk in the door?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the every, at every juncture along the way, they should be, they're being evaluated as a potential candidate. The other thing is, uh, um, oftentimes, there's an opportunity for a department director panel of some sort. And there's a couple of ways that this can be done. One is could just pick maybe three or four individuals to do a specific panel and it'll be part of the rotation. Another is, um, having the whole leadership team be in a single room and breaking them up into, you know, tables. And then the candidates would simply go around, have twenty minutes at each table and be able to, um, you know, they, they get the same questions asked, the individuals would, um, you know, provide that input. Either one is very, very effective. And again, we would, we would collect their feedback electronically so that we could collate it quickly for you and be able to present it to you during your deliberations, um, later that day or, or the next day. So those are those two, two options unless you can think of another, um, different option. Um, also there's a, there's, uh, sometimes a panel of community stakeholders doing interviews. And those can be folks that you may think of. Um, it's a big commitment of time and so, you know, depending on how many you have, it might be half of their day or something like that. But people are usually for this kind of important position, you know, you might, you might have those three or four people who would be willing to serve on a, on a panel interview. And, uh, and that would be that, that good representation of that formal interview process as opposed to the informal. And then, um, and then of course, there's the, there's opportunity for meet and greets. And those are great. I, I really am a big advocate for those because you get a chance to, to see how these candidates interact with people. Do they stay with one group for comfort level? Do they know how to work a room? Do they know how to introduce themselves? Do they ask a lot of questions? There's a lot that goes to it that, you know, you're evaluating as you go along. And, um, sometimes chambers will host that. Maybe they host a, a welcome later. Um, I think it's good for the, for the city to host it. And you could, sometimes it could be a breakfast, it could be a, a reception later in the day. And again, you don't have to make any of those, but, but just, you know, like, yeah, we want to do something and then we can finalize it as we go later. Because, you know, three weeks or so in advance, you're gonna want to send out invitations. And you also don't want it to be so big that people don't have the opportunity to meet everyone. You know, if it's a room of sixty people and you, you're, you're trying to make your way, you're not gonna meet everyone. And so, you know, you kind of want to, maybe somewhere around thirty to forty max would be a good number to include maybe some of the, you know, chairs of your boards of commissions and, um, some of the, uh, your community leaders, your chamber exec. Uh, and those, those people can be determined later. Um, so anyway, tho, those are some initial thoughts on the, the process. We have lots of time and maybe, um, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, maybe what we can do is I'll give you a chance to think about the, that final process and what that, and you can, you can mull on it a little bit. And then the next time we meet, we can, you know, kind of cull it down a little bit because it's not gonna happen till February, so we have a lot of time. Uh, but I did want you to, to have a flavor for what that could, um, could look like. But I do want to spend some time talking to you about your, um, your views on the candidate profile. What are you looking for? And, um, and I've got some, you know, some questions that I kind of want to, want to run through. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. So, i, is that all right, Mayor? I jumped ahead. I did it without your permission. I apologize.
Actually, I was gonna comment, when you talk about the tour of the city and the, and the highlights of key issues, you know, about maybe one or two people with that person, with the finalist? I was thinking of, of dash cam, but James Corden in the, in the late night, late, late night. And you know, hard way to work. Anyway, that's what came to mind. But actually, in this day and age, with technology, you could actually do that. You could have a dash cam.
And Aaron will watch him?
Well, but you could and that way it covers all of us.
I, I'm not sure I'd recommend that, but.
I know, I know. And we probably should disclose that we're doing that too.
We would disclose it.
That might be a little creepy.
Yeah.
I did have a question though, um, if I may, on, on the finalist, uh, interview process. If, um, I mean, I like, I like everything about what is stated on here. What timeline do you provide for that, all those things to happen? Is it over a two-day? Is it?
You know, we can probably get it in one day. What happens is people come in and, and it's a very, we shuffle them from spot to spot, do you know what I mean? And so, you know, this person first goes here and then they go here and then they get their tour and then they might have an hour break and then they, and then they come and they meet with you. And then, so we typically can do it in, in one, in a single day.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah. So it all, it, what would really be kind of the, the, um, as to whether or not would be two days for your deliberations is when you wanted to have the, the meet and greet. Do you want to do a, you know, a breakfast? Do you want to do a, um, you know, later that evening? Do you want to come back? Is it too, is it too late? Do you want to meet again in the morning? And those are those things we can work out later.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Unless you have five candidates you really love and then we might have to do two days.
True. Any other comments from council? Okay.
All right.
Continue, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I've reviewed your updated job description and it is a great summary of the functions of the city manager. That is, that will be easy to pull together and to summarize. That's half the story. And so, um, what I, equally important is a description of the type of person that you're looking for and what they bring to the table. So that's what I want to spend a little bit of time talking to you about and getting your input on. So I'm real, I'm gonna start and I'm, I'm just gonna go through questions. And then, Mayor, you can ask, you know, call on recognized people and I will take copious notes. But my first question is, what are those qualities and characteristics that you consider to be the most important for your next city manager to possess?
And once again, don't feel so formal, chap, to ask. Just, this is a workshop. Let's just keep it informal. So we're good. So if you need to stop, Mary, and ask her, just, just do it. Okay?
I don't want to go first.
You don't want to go first?
Grace, that's a great example.
Thank you, councillor Eric. Vice Mayor.
Will you repeat the question?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, Vice Mayor, excuse me. Um, what, what qualities and characteristics do you think are the most important for, um, your next city manager to, to have in order to be successful here?
So I, I look for someone that's friendly, you know, um, approachable. Somebody that's going to, um, be involved in our community.
Communicates well.
Yeah, strong, strong communicator, definitely, and a very transparent communicator. Ethical, obviously.
Attention to detail and thoroughness.
I like the one thing, you know, community pride is on here. Because there's a lot of good people here in Kingman and we are proud that we live here in Kingman. And it's getting ready to even just grow even more. And we need to help steer, steer that pride and, and keep, remind people of it.
Yes.
Take pride in their community.
So I agree about, um, a strong communicator, um, somebody that's trustworthy. Um, we had talked earlier, uh, but I'll just bring it up for everybody, is a, a team player. And, um, a competent leader with, without the, you know, ego, but just somebody that's confident in, in being a leader and working with others and, and working as a team. Oh, and somebody that's responsive, responsive to our concerns.
Okay. Okay.
I like, um, problem solver. Let's find a way to get to the yes and not always talk about how we can't do something. I, I want to hear how we can do something. And somebody that follows through, follows up and follows through. Those are.
Open-minded.
Yes, out-of-the-box thinker.
Okay.
Well, let's face it, on our list of qualities that we have here, almost everything, everything is critical.
Everything is critical. That's how this list got so long.
That's okay. That's all right.
So we could almost highlight everyone. That's what we're doing, really, as we go down this list.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
We need someone that keeps everybody on council equally informed.
Okay.
A project planner or manager that can, uh, coordinate all the parts of them, of, of the pieces moving together and keep track of them.
Well, and I say, uh, I also think of a good delegator. You know, I mean, that's, you have the right people in the right positions, you shouldn't have any problem delegating, trusting.
A manager that holds just people accountable, but people under him, they're managers.
Another word that comes to mind is someone who's gracious and gives credit where credit is due, especially from staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, because that sometimes gets pushed aside.
You know, it also has to be somebody that's, um, capable of juggling a lot of different things at once, right? From, sometimes it's a tiny issue, but sometimes we're working on some very big and complex projects. And, and being able to handle all of that equally, I think is challenging. I don't know if there's one word that would describe that ability, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, um.
Well, I see, like prioritize. We need someone that's gonna prioritize the important tasks, you know? And, um, someone that can manage timelines effectively.
Okay.
Needs to be somebody that is not offended by constructive criticism because you're gonna get a lot of it. Some of it's not all that constructive, but it, you have to deal with that.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
And there's some people that do not deal with that well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, receiving that is always tough, right? But it's what you do with it and how you internalize that.
Right. I know we're kind of touching on the next one. I was getting to the skills and abilities and you were talking about some of them, the prioritization, the project planning, the, and so I, you've kind of melded them together, which is fine. Um, but maybe for those of you who are thinking about just the, the characteristics and traits, any other skills and abilities that come to mind that maybe haven't been mentioned yet? And again, remember, I've got the job description, so I will be using that. But in terms of those ones that just like really jump to the top from your perspective.
Well, when you look at all those skills, like as I mentioned before, those are all
Right.
so important to all of us.
Technology, being up to date with technology.
Okay, so somebody who at least is technology proficient?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also okay with dry heat.
Well, who isn't?
No, right?
The word Arizona should tell them right off the bat.
That's right. And you might get some Arizona candidates. I expect you will. I do.
You know, I think somebody that's got skills in thinking strategically, because we are a growing city, and we need to really be planning for the growth. I, I think that, you know, this place is going to see a lot of changes in the next 10 years, and the planning ahead that we do will make all the difference. So, somebody that can, that is maybe either been through those growing pains or has worked in a city, you know, that's been there. I, I don't know if this is what you're asking for, but I'm not opposed to somebody who worked as an engineer in a city or a planner. It doesn't have to be necessarily someone from, you know, an administrative position. We've seen other managers who, who were, you know, the public works engineer
Sure.
and moved up, or the finance manager and moved up. So, I think, you know, a dynamic leader and manager who has experience, proven experience, for me, anyway, holds more weight than a master's degree in public admin, you know?
Okay.
Forward thinker.
Ah, I was going to say forward thinker. Forward thinker, but also someone who's innovative and also proactive rather than reactive and doesn't necessarily procrastinate and wait till the last minute to do something.
Thinking about the, well, actually, let me, let me ask you this. What are, what are the top three positive trends that you see in Kingman that the next city manager is going to encounter upon starting their new role?
Growth.
Massive growth.
Okay.
There is a lot of opportunity that will come with expanding our industrial park.
Okay.
And we are right on the verge of, of getting phase two, and there's even a phase three. So, the excitement that's involved with, with kind of developing this industrial park that is city-owned property is one. I think that our, our tourism, while that is, you know, the number-one industry for Kingman is tourism, the largest industry, I think that we're going to see that expand and grow on its own just with some of the improvements that we're doing to downtown and the, the new young entrepreneurs that are, are coming in and, and offering, you know, these new shops and these kinds of things. So, I think tourism is going to be another one. What's the third one you guys?
They'll need to understand the water situation in this area, too. And that's extremely important to us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that kind of gets us into, so feel free to tell me either those positive trends or what do you think are the top issues or challenges that will face the new city manager? Now, I can't guarantee you that the candidates we bring forward are going to have experience in every single area that you talk about, right? But as you talk to me about the ones that are, like, we really need someone, maybe you don't have someone who knows the water situation, but has an aptitude to learn it, right? You know, you don't need a water director because, but, but they need to know this is a big issue.
Well, the infrastructure, both the old infrastructure in the city and the new infrastructure is going to be very important, especially with the growth. Because if you don't keep up the old and size the new appropriately, then we're going to have a problem.
Right. Right, absolutely.
Your third positive, to go back, are the two new interchanges opening?
Yes.
And the retail development that will come from that, opening up those two new areas? I knew there was more top positives. And then, your negative, I agree with Smiley on, infrastructure, but then, so water is just an issue that's so complex. So, I know you, it would be very hard to find somebody that's an expert, but somebody that's got a little fight in them, you know, and will help fight, fight for our water resources.
And also, one of our biggest problems we're facing, too, is attracting professionals to move here and retaining them.
Yeah. Professionals, doctors, entrepreneurs, services. We do have Carl, though. He's holding the city together.
It has to be somebody that can balance the infrastructure needs with the amenities. It can't be a one or the other.
Right.
It has to be somebody that can do a good mix of those, too.
Yeah.
And with budget constraints.
The budget constraints, I was going to say that, is our revenue is limited to sales tax.
Right.
We do not have a property tax.
Right.
And so, we are looking for ways to increase the revenues without increasing taxes, because that has to go to a vote of the people here.
And as you mentioned, tourism is our biggest leader in that revenue.
Right. Tourism, more retail.
We're very pro-sales tax. Anything that has to do with sales tax. I mean, the challenge, challenge, too, that we're facing is, you know, with the upcoming state of the state budget, you know, they're, they're looking at a deficit, and we get some of our revenues for, from shared, we're shared with the state, and we're at their mercy. So, I mean, somebody that's going to understand that, prepare for that, and fight for our share.
Yeah. I was talking to council members daily about the potential for annexation in the future of areas that are being, is that a priority? Is that something that you kind of see happening maybe a little bit more down the line, or?
I think if it makes sense. I mean, I, I'm, we're not, we're not opposed to it.
Yeah.
But it's got to make fiscal sense.
Right.
But the hardest part is, we don't have a property tax, and so because of that,
Right, yeah. You're looking at the commercial and the...
Unless it generates sales tax, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense unless you can generate money from it, because you take over the infrastructure, your cost is, and it, it's a delicate balance.
Yeah.
So, we're, we are waiting for a report from the city manager to look at, like, the second phase of the industrial park and what we would gain from not just sales tax, but also development fees and all the other fees that would go in with the investments that are going to be made there. So, so, that is a to-be-continued subject, but it is something that we are working on.
And talk was even about annexing, putting that part of the newer, at least the newer part of the expansion into city limits and annexing it.
Yeah, that's, that's something they're coming back to us with, yeah.
Right, so...
I read in your budget book that you've got a seven-year funding solution for street repair maintenance after the Prop 415 failed. But what I also read is that that's going to give you time to put a permanent solution in place theoretically. So, so when you're talking about someone who can begin to think creatively about revenue generation, and what are some of those other areas that could be tapped into that aren't, that don't require going to the voters, and I know exactly what that is like. And it's tough, it's tough, absolutely. So, so, infrastructure, it sounds to me like infrastructure in general is something that you, you're looking for somebody who has a good, strong, solid understanding, if not, if they're not an engineer, at least a good, has done capital planning and understands it and, and can participate actively in, you know, those strategic, that strategic look to the future in terms of your infrastructure investments and the financing to be able to pay for it.
I would add, somebody that understands the development process and how important being open for business, you know, when it comes to, we play a major role in that process from start to finish in developing, whether it's a subdivision or it's developing commercial property or a retail shopping center. So, somebody that can help make sure that that process stays customer-friendly, you know, is really important. Also, economic development, we have an excellent economic development team, but we would want a manager that can support, you know, our economic development efforts.
Okay. I also read that you all do the National Citizen Survey. Is there any information from that survey that you feel would be beneficial or, or might tell me a story? Maybe you can give me the last couple of results, and I can glean it? You know, that's also part of that citizen input process in terms of, at least what those top issues are, or what are some of the things that the community is telling you that might, we might be able to build into that candidate profile?
Yeah, the unfortunate part of that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is the citizen survey, the answers you get and then reality are two different things. Because you, you only get answers from a few people. And if you extrapolate that out, you, you would think that this is accurate. But then, like Prop 415, it was not. And, and I think it's that way on more issues than just the tax.
Okay.
And I, I don't see that as a good
A good source.
Measure of...
Okay, alright, that's fine.
That's just my opinion.
Well, I would say, one of the things that we glean year over year after the, of those surveys is quality of life. Quality of life is very important to our citizens. So, that needs to be something that is talked about. Also, understanding that we have a greater population that live outside of our city limits. So, our demographics need to be understood as well, as far as our population outside the city limits utilizing city services. And, and we struggle because the citizens within the city limits make the decisions and are the voters. We have the greater population that use our services, that live outside, that have a larger voice. I think that's what Counselor Ward was trying to get across. You know, they, they have a large voice, but they don't necessarily have a voting voice. So, understanding our community and that struggle with, with those issues is important.
Okay. Great. Are there any expectations or concerns that you have about the recruitment process that, that you want to share with me that we haven't already talked about? I just want to make sure that I hear them, absorb them, and figure out how we can address them as, as best we can and how we structure the, the process?
I think we've covered just about...
Yeah, we've covered it. I think the one concern that I have, and I don't know that, you know, there is any control over this, but it's just getting an applicant that can fit into our community. You know, I, I've considered, and I've, I've mulled this over, do we need somebody local? Do we need somebody in the county? Because we, we haven't been able to find somebody that just comes in and fits. I think small towns are probably hard, you know, when you have this, you, you, you have this tight-knit group, and how, how does somebody come in? And maybe that's part, our responsibility is making sure that the new person is, is better welcome, you know, has a more warm welcome. But that is just one of my concerns, and I, I think that goes back to wanting to do the semifinalists, you know, here. We, we don't want to get somebody that, you know, is never going to be successful in our community.
Right.
I, I share those concerns. It, it is tough to move, depending on where the candidate's coming from, into, I mean, they could be moving from a small town to a small town, and it's still a challenging transition. Just, and I think that's why I would like to see in a candidate some personality and some, some ways to interact with, with individuals. I mean, it sounds very basic, but I feel like this candidate needs to have very strong people skills. They need to be able to read people. They need to be able to interact with all different kinds of people. I mean, we, we have a very, we have a, we have a very diverse... Yeah, we have a very diverse community. We have people coming from metro areas. We have people coming from out of state. We have, you know, we have people that grew up here. So, if, if they can communicate to all levels, that is my concern. And I feel like people that move to our community struggle with that. So, I hear, I hear your concerns, and it's, it's one of my biggest concerns is, is that person going to be able to meld into the fold of our community?
Of course, of course. Well, you know, hearing that you are open to high-quality department directors, that's a big plus for you. Not all communities are. You know, they're like, no, only if they've been an assistant manager or a manager in another community are we, you know, are we... And, and I think that's very wise on your part, because, because some of those individuals aren't always given an opportunity to break into city management, even though that's really what they want to do. And, and they, they get committed real quickly because they are the ones on the ground doing the, you know, the, the public works infrastructure or, you know, whatever. Sometimes it's even admin services or, you know, where, where they have a great deal of leadership experience in an organization. So, so that gives us an opening to look for people with some longevity where they are. And then, the other thing is, as I mentioned before, I think we have an opportunity to pull in folks from California, potentially, who have hit, who are, quite honestly, they're ready to start collecting their pension, but they're still young. You know, they might be in their, their early 50s, but they've, they've got their points, they can collect, they've always wanted to, to move, it's less expensive here, they want to get out of the rat race, and the thought of being on Route 66 and in, you know, in Arizona and Kingman and everything is like, wow, that sounds really cool, that sounds really exciting. So, so those are, you know, I think some of those areas that, that we can have some success with in terms of reaching out to candidates.
I will tell you, I'm, I'm going to be skeptical of the department applicants. And I'll tell you why. I, I feel like with us being on the precipice of so much growth and so many things going on, I don't want to pigeonhole us with someone that has a certain set of skills but isn't as diversified as, as someone else that may have been in an assistant city manager position. We need somebody that is going to hit the ground running and is going to be all things everywhere, and they're going to need to be ready to go. So, I, I'm skeptical.
So, only high-quality, very extensive leadership has done other things? Or maybe multiple departments kind of thing?
No offense to the engineers out there, but I just, I don't want an engineer that's very, you know, in the box and rigid and can't communicate with people.
Yeah.
You know, maybe a great engineer, and they may know infrastructure inside and out and how to build a road and how to put in sewer lines, and, you know, yes, we need those people. But we don't need those people potentially interacting with the public or, you know, I, I'm going to be skeptical, and I, I just want to put that out there. That is one of my concerns.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
I just, just to kind of add on to that, you know, I think about one of the other interim city manager that we had interviewed, which, he was an engineer, he started out as an engineer, and then they, they didn't have any other choice, they just moved him up to be the city manager of Lake Havasu. And he was, you know, I think that's, that's where I'm open to that position, because he had some things thrown at him, like their sewer problems, and he was able to find solutions, and he didn't, he didn't come from the city manager background, but he was just that kind of person. So, when you say high-quality, I hope they're all, you know, high-quality. But I think just being open to other things, because we've been hiring city managers who had city manager experience, and they didn't work out either. So, that's my concern about maybe, you know, I don't want to see all engineers or planners, a mix. But I hope that if we have a wider net in that, we will find that perfect candidate that we're looking for.
And I, I agree, but I, I just wanted to say one last thing. I just, I, I don't want a candidate that's going to need to grow up in this position.
Okay.
Basically, you're saying you're looking for a candidate that's had... So, basically, you're saying you're looking for a candidate that's been, that's had a variety of experience. You don't want somebody from one field. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, and I understand that. I mean, somebody that, we've had, I've seen different city managers that started out working for the city in another position, and probably moved through three or four positions before they became a city manager. That's somebody that has the expertise in each of those areas. And to me, that would be what we're looking for.
Sure.
Somebody that combines everything we're looking for, whether he's a city manager, or a city engineer, or a public works director, or what he is. But if he's worked through those positions, he's, all he needs is the certification of his city manager.
Right.
Well, and along those lines, he might have been a city manager in a smaller city, but moved to a big city. Now, he's only a department head.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, all this, so basically, you don't wanna rule anybody out.
Yeah, or if you think, you know, our finance director was our manager for a month. She did an amazing job. You know, she could have kept going. She's only been the finance director, but she has all these skills that, you know, could have, she could do it, the job as a manager as well. So, you, you just don't know, but I, yeah, I think a wide net.
I'm keeping an open mind, Councilor Staley. It's only fair.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Great. Um, this is very, very helpful, and, um, your staff has been just great. I'm gonna, I'm, because I think there's some information that we will need as your recruiters as we talk to candidates. You know, they wanna know things like, you know, what are the housing costs there? And, you know, what, what, what are the school districts like? And that, and we'll, we'll try to reflect some of that, uh, in the, the brochure, because we wanna paint really a strong picture of what the community is and what it's like to live there. But if you have any tidbits about those things in the community that are a real draw, um, you know, let Krista know, or let Grady know, and they'll, they'll get that to me, and we'll try to incorporate that into the brochure. But even just talking to me about them, so that as I'm talking to someone, and they're like, well, you know, I don't, you know, I, yeah, I've thought about it. I don't know. That, that it gives us a chance to really talk up, um, you know, the, the community. So, you know, the one thing about people who are in this profession is that, um, you know, we understand that in every city, there's one job, right? One. That's the city manager, if that's what you wanna be. So, you gotta move around, oh, excuse me, you have to move around. And, and so there are people who are, who are prepared to do that. And, you know, they've, like, well, I, I've been here for seven or eight years, and I'm, I'm ready for that next challenge. I'm ready to apply my skills to some other community. And so, we'll be looking for those as well. As I mentioned to you before, I do wanna, you know, temper your expectations just because the, um, the economic environment right now is challenging for people relocating. It's tough, unless you're relocating from a really expensive area where it makes perfect sense to sell your home, and even if you did need to get a mortgage, or maybe it would be a small one,
Yeah.
uh, in order to, to purchase a home. I think we talked about this before, but you will, um, be offering a relocation allowance? Is that correct? Okay, we can, we can talk about that, and we can, we can, uh,
Krista's waving, nodding, so.
Saying yes.
Great, great. Um, yeah, and if there are any other things in terms of, Krista will get me all the information on the benefits, and, you know, that sort of thing, just so we can reflect that in the, in the brochure. But this has been extremely helpful. It really, I'm, I'm really excited about doing this. I'm, you know, I've been in Arizona my, most of my life, and in city management here in Arizona, most, all but six years of it. So, I'm really passionate about making sure that we get good people at the leadership level in, in this state. And I personally think that the Arizona City County Management Association is probably one of the strongest support organizations for city managers in the country. I mean, there are some other really good ones, and that's a really good draw for people to know that they have this team, and I'm sure Grady would agree with that. There's such a great team, and, um, that would be available, and even your, your counterparts in Havasu, and, and Bullhead City. I'm sure those managers would be happy to take your new manager under their wing, and, you know, um, make them really feel a part of this region. And, and that is important. And I do think that some thought needs to be given to council in the future about that onboarding process for them. Um, and, you know, not just, hey, here's your job, welcome aboard, but really some thought on who should they meet with? And who's gonna invite them to this, and who's gonna take them to this? And, you know, who's gonna, um, suggest their spouse, you know, meet with a different group, or whatever? Because they will feel more invested in the community, and be willing to stay if you spend a little time doing that. Because I can tell you, being a manager is a lonely job. It's a lonely job, and so getting people, you know, getting that support system around you is, is really, really important. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for the privilege of being here this evening.
Thank you.
Any final questions for Mary?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thanks again. We appreciate you taking the time to come up here. And, uh, if there's no other questions or comments, we can be adjourned.
Wait, I just wanna add, Krista, can you, could we, since she brings this up, and we're, it's fresh in our minds, uh, can you put a pin on that, in that, that we would like to strat- to sit down and do a strategy, uh, strategy meeting? I'm getting tired. Um, on how we are going to handle that onboarding, and welcome this new employee into the community?
Absolutely. I think that was a wonderful suggestion.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that we, as a organization, have improved our own onboarding experience for our actual employees.
Sure.
And so, for this, I think that we would wanna do the best job that we could to make the person feel welcome.
Yeah, and we, we certainly wanna be a part of that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before you leave, can you also, um, make sure, I'm sure you will, but the ED pamphlets that they put together about our community and, and all of that, can you make sure that that gets to Mary as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just recently shared, we've, um, opened the, uh, development director position open, and we created our own brochure for it, and I was very proud of it. Uh, my team member produced it, and I've already shared that with Mary, too. And we, we did use some of that ED material, so.
Will you share that with us, too?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's on our website, cityofkingman.com.
I'll go find it. I'll find it. Thank you.
No, no, I, I'm happy to send the link as well, though.
Exciting. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, we're adjourned.